Correctly in the past, but if you know a certain candidate needs three or four more points to get in a position on the list, I've cut out and the union has agreed. The process is layered with levels of integrity checkpoints and we have a very good system. And I think Mr. DeValt would agree, running the personnel board, the process that we have.
Thank you, Chief. That answers my question.
Is there any other discussion from the council?
Yeah, just one last question, Mr. Chairman. Chief, does this bring us in line with most of the other communities in Rhode Island that might also do their testing in this localized way as well?
Yes, it's my understanding that, you know, the vast majority of municipal police agencies are utilizing exam that, you know, best tests, you know, what the officer or the sergeant, the supervisor is going to be doing in the field. So it, to me, it's an improved model because we're going to be testing people on things that are going to be applicable, you know, to the supervisor in the field. It's important for me to know that they've all studied the policies and procedures. They, they're all current on Rhode Island general law, case law. And there's also, you know, an independent management book, First Line Supervisors book, that goes in concert with, with that study material. My alma mater, you know, had always utilized this particular system. You know, I'm aware of the Johnston and, and several other of the departments that are utilizing it. So we are no way an anomaly. We are kind of joining the other cities and towns that are using this.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we had a motion to approve with a second. So Tim? I'm sorry. I apologize. We had a motion and a second to approve with the stated amendments. I apologize. So Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chairman DeValt and the Personnel Board for bringing this forward.
The, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council is item G1, and this is your Public Service Appointment section of the agenda. The first item is, which is G1A, is the Newport and Bristol County Convention and Visitors Bureau. There's, there is one representative from the town. The current appointee is Karen Binder, who seeks reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. I make a motion that we reappoint Karen Binder.
And I'll second the motion.
We had a motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to reappoint Karen Binder. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
The, the next item is the Board of Tax Assessment Review. You have the resignation of Carolyn Breslin.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept Carolyn Breslin's resignation with a letter of thanks. I know she's been on the, the board a number of years and for Lou to advertise the opening.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, this is one of those boards that by, by, by nature is one of political influence. So the, the current two members are both nominees of the Democrat Town Committee. Mrs. Breslin was the lone Republican. So we contacted, I believe you have a copy of the letter we sent to Mr. Carroll, asking him to put forth a recommendation to the council, which we expect hopefully in time for the next meeting.
So, so Mr. Clerk, do we typically advertise or do we just, and, and I'm talking about for a Republican candidate, of course, because that's what you just said.
We never have for those boards that have that specific requirement. I would imagine that you would. The, the problem is that there is that specific requirement and it could possibly be disappointing to those individuals who may not understand that and would apply. And I think what the decision was made long before me, because it's never been advertised, that it was best to wait for nominations from, from the parties.
Certainly. Makes sense to me. Okay. So Vice Chair Sweeney, you were in the middle of a mo, of motion to thank Carolyn Breslin?
Correct. And to accept her resignation. So it was a motion to accept the resignation and with a letter of thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second for a letter of thanks for, and for her time and accept that. And then also to, maybe we reach out again to Mr. Carroll in a timely fashion, whatever timely means in this, maybe for our next meeting to find out if there's a candidate. Okay. So there was a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries.
And finally, the Harbor Commission Advisory Committee, there was one remaining of a, rather reappointment to consider. The council will recall that this matter was considered at the last meeting. It was noted that Mr. McDonald had not requested the opportunity for reappointment and shortly after the meeting, his letter requesting reappointment did come forward. So we do have the application of John R. McDonald, 15 Stephen Drive, currently serving, who wishes to be reappointed to the Harbor Commission Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chairman, Tony, I make a motion. We reappoint John.
Second.
There's a motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to reappoint John McDonald. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. I'd also like to, on behalf of this council, thank all of those who volunteer their time and efforts for the town. This council appreciates it and the town of Bristol appreciates it. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is a request from the Administrator for Executive Session. I would expect the council would like to take that up at the conclusion of the public agenda.
Yes, please.
And then the next item is item I2, and this is the petition of Unity Park LLC, request council consideration for tax stabilization for property located at 500 Wood Street, and that is assessors plat 29-0001, lots 10, 21, and 30. And you have some supplemental information provided by the Director of Community Development regarding this application.
So I believe that unless Diane, there was something that you wanted to preface this with. I know that we have supporting documentation. I can see that we have Joseph Britto on the call. I'd like to recognize him, give him a moment to kind of give a synopsis or defer off to his representation to do that. Mr. Britto?
I'd like to pass that to Ed Cox, who's sitting here with me, please.
Perfect. Mr. Cox?
Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening.
I've worked with Diane Williamson to prepare the application, provide support and documentation. The request for stabilization is for the monies that will be expended substantially by the end of the year. It may fall into January and maybe a little bit into February. You know, it's roughly a $2 million capital improvement. The plan is that once we get through this year, that we'll be putting together capital improvement plan for 2021. And it's very likely that we'll be expending an amount similar to that and we'll be looking for further stabilization. So this is the request for the current year. There's substantial improvements that are being made to build in Group One and build in Group Two. And I would, and I think that by the end of next year, we should be substantially through building Group One and building Group Two. And building Group Three is residential and we realize that's not a tax stabilization eligible expenditure. And so I, I would say that by the end of 2021, we should be pretty well complete with building Group One and building Group Two.
So first, I am, I think I speak for all of us that we're ecstatic to see that property going from what it is right now. And like most things, blight will take over, improvements also take over. And that surrounding, those surrounding neighbors will, will feel and see those improvements. And, and quite honestly, for too long, it's been in a place where it was a detriment to the neighborhood. I'm personally, actually, I shouldn't say personally. I know we all are. We're all very happy that this is taking the next steps. I'd like to remind the public of a few things. This tax stabilization possibility has been in, in place for a while, but it was cleaned up a few years ago to make it, I'd like to call it English, because before it used to be 40 pages or so. The idea behind it is to make improvements or have businesses invest back into their properties or purchase a property and invest and make it more advantageous for them to do so. This particular property, what's being proposed is $2 million improvement. Our tax stabilization is written that anything over $500,000 is subject to a five or a 10-year term. Typically, this council has approved a 10-year in the past with dollars in this vicinity. We're talking about 2 million in this instance. I would also like to remind everybody, more of the public than the council, because I think you may already know this. This property is currently valued at approximately $750,000. Those taxes still apply. This tax stabilization would apply to those improvements. And of course, those benefits are felt there, but also, as we just talked about, the surrounding community and then ultimately the town of Bristol. So this is a place where broken windows and less than quality areas are going to turn into beautiful new windows and, and lots of vitality, not vitally, vitality out there. So it's, it's good news. But I'd like to open up to my colleagues for their thoughts and, and what your next steps would like to be.
Mr. Chairman, Tim, I just wanted to say that I'm also very pleased and looking forward to the approval of this tax stabilization. The whole point of this ordinance is to improve economic growth, and this is exactly what it does. This property will be changed over. It's going to bring jobs. It's going to change that community and the lasting effects on the town are immense. So based on the value and looking at the ordinance, it looks like they would qualify and for a 10-year tax stabilization, if I'm reading it correctly.
I agree. Mary?
I just wanted to comment as well. I mean, if, is that a motion, Tim? Do they want to second it? If it is, but.
Yeah, you can, we'll take it as a motion.
Okay. I, I just want to comment in, along the same lines. I mean, we're very, very, very happy. I think we've all said this to Joe ourselves individually and collectively, very happy that he was purchased this property. It was a long road. It's been a long road for us on the council and in our planning department to go through CDBG and all kinds of like small amounts of money to try to get a roof fixed here and a thing, you know, the fire suppression system there. And it's been very, very difficult, very difficult for the people who were, the businesses that were in there. And it has been a very, very long road to get to a next step. And I think we're all so grateful and happy that we have someone who is invested in the community in general and everything that Joe, Joe Britto does, but also into this project. Because as, as Nathan and Tim have pointed out, I mean, this is like sort of a blighted area that we really need to, to work on. But it has just been such a long road and so many attempts to, to get there. And then it was such a long road once the bankruptcy. And so it is, the, the fact that we have someone that is able and willing to invest, that has the capital to invest, I think that is a, that in itself is just amazing. And we should do everything we can to support that, to support the upgrade of this property and to really see what that whole neighborhood can, can become.
Mr. Chairman?
Tony?
I have to concur with all of you. Certainly, I've gone through this for the last 12 years, actually. Been involved in different phases and levels, whether it was on the board and as administrator and counselor. So I am thrilled that Mr. Britto has stepped forward in the willingness to invest and certainly improve the area greatly. I'm sure it will be greatly. There's no question about it. He never sets for second class, so he certainly do a first class job there. And certainly the neighbors were welcomed there very much. That's, you know, something I've heard from the neighbors over the years and they certainly will be thrilled to see what's coming next.
Thank you. Aaron?
Mr. Chairman, this is Aaron Lay. I remember when I first got onto the council, this was one of the first significant issues that popped up was this property right here. And I remember going to this property and trying to learn as much as I possibly could about it. And for me, even when I was, with the time I spent over there, I was, you know, I was not very optimistic about the possibilities of somebody taking something like this over. So the fact that this is happening right now is a really exciting development, I think, for our town. And, and so I think improvements that are made here are a huge public good. I think that any kind of improvements that are made are going to have major spillover effects, positive spillover effects in places like Wood Street and even other parts of town as well. And so it's really exciting that this is happening and, and I'm here to support it moving forward.
Mr. Administrator? Can't hear you. Oh, there you are.
Yeah, I'd just like to first thank Mosaic. They did put a lot of hard work in there and they were very connected to the property and they, 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 they kept it up the best they could. And I know there were jobs there. So thank you to Diana Kimble, the past executive director, and all the members in the board of Mosaic. They did the best that they could. But we, I am thrilled that it is back on the tax rolls, the property. Another interesting thing in speaking with Mr. Britto and Ed Cox, it's, 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 it's a testament to our past to know that businesses like Luther's Welding is staying there. And thank you to Mr. Britto for accommodating that. And it looks like that's going to work out. It's always provided work and steady paychecks in the town. So I'm, I'm happy to see that. And yeah, great, great news. That's, that's what I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. And thank you for sharing that great point about there were and are current employers there and have been there for quite a long time. So if I colored in the wrong way, it certainly wasn't to disparage what they've done. In no way did I mean to do that. Thank you for, for making that point. Diane Williamson, Director of Community Development, did we miss any, it sounds like everything is here and there. And thumbs up for taking the next step in the tax stabilization. Did we miss anything?
No, I, I think we did, we did cover everything. I reviewed this with Mr. Cox when it was submitted. And I believe that it's all in order for you tonight. They meet the qualifications for applying. They meet the threshold for the five or 10-year stabilization. And so I would, I would recommend that you go forward with this.
So before I ask for the vote, on behalf of all of us, I'll remind our businesses that if, if there's an opportunity from listening to this that you would like to take advantage of, reach out to Diane Williamson and she can walk you through the basics of what the next steps would be. This council is willing to, to have these discussions because if you're looking to invest into the property, that will help with more employment, will improve not only your property, but the surrounding properties. And you hit the parameters of this ordinance, which I started by saying, we very much simplified it. Please reach out. This is, this doesn't cost the town anything because you currently, whatever your value of your property is, is there right now. But my goodness, it adds so much value moving forward and it shows commitment on both sides to be here for a very long time. That's why the five and 10 years, we're not afraid of those things. So I had a motion from Tim, seconded by Mary for, to approve this with a 10-year term, if I understood that correctly, Vice Chair?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Perfect. And seconded by Mary. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say the name, I'd just like to say the name is very good. Unity Park. It's definitely doing what everybody had said tonight. So with that, aye, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Britto, and thank you, Mr. Cox.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item I3, and this is from the Administrator and the Treasurer regarding estimated fiscal year 2019, 2020 fund balance carryovers.
So I'm going to go right to, unless you have objection, Mr. Administrator, to our Treasurer, Ms. Pellerin. And maybe if you could just kind of give us, the council, and of course, the public, a quick overview of what the goal is.
So the goal tonight is to assign fund balance for the fiscal year 1920, which actually ended June 30. What is attached to the memo is the town's fund balance policy. And historically, any fund balance that's left over at year end is assigned to the town's unassigned fund balance, which is the rainy day fund. What we'd like to do tonight is apply any of the fiscal year 1920 balance after the audit to capital and one-time expenditures and departmental carryovers. We estimate that the fund balance will be slightly less than 500,000. And I want to point out that this will not impact the current fund balance, which is actually meets all the requirements spelled out in the policy as well as best practices with regards to any of our financial advisement. The town has a very healthy fund balance and really a healthy fund balance means a well-run town. And you can see that with our bond rating and how it impacts any borrowing that we've had. And any disclosures to any of that borrowing also notes that we have a really healthy fund balance. So what we're, the, the goal again tonight is to use the, just the balance that we end with for capital projects that we had discussed during our capital presentation that we weren't allowed to fund, just because we didn't have the funding at the time.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Administrator, if you could just add some clarity, it's my understanding from talking with you earlier, that the goal here, as the Treasurer just pointed out, was to, to kind of continue with capital projects. And we'll take a moment to kind of share a couple of those. This council had approved the capital projects plan as we typically do on a yearly basis. We had spent or had, were going to spend and had spent $50,000. This would be $500,000 and it would include, and please, Mr. Administrator, if you could add some clarity on a couple of things, but I know there's compost improvements. I know that there are water access improvements. I'd call that Wally Beach. And I'd like to take a couple of moments, if you don't mind, to go through a couple of these. But sidewalk improvements, public building repairs, drainage repairs. But maybe if you could kind of give a little bit more clarity on those or any others that you feel are appropriate.
Sure. So what we'd like to do is exactly as explained, we'd like to continue on our bold improvement in maintenance of our infrastructure, our buildings, our sidewalks, our access to the water. These are all items that we discussed last March. And because of the constraints of the budget at the time, we only funded $50,000 of capital to those projects. Really, we had 500,000 in capital. The only other way to fund these projects would be through borrowing, but we have the money. We have the money in our rainy day fund. So rather than going above and beyond what's required at this point or incurring interest that we'd have to pay long-term, we would like to continue those projects. Sidewalks, for example, today we talked about Second School Street, there's a requirement. Today we talked about the end of Dartmouth Street. There was a, a change order to help with the drainage there. These are things that many of them, yes, they're planned in capital, but there's also infrastructure issues that need to be addressed mid-year. And here's another example, the playgrounds. The playgrounds are over 20 years old. They're starting to fail. We've had claims. You'll see more and more tripping, trip and fall claims on our sidewalks. So we're trying to stay ahead of that. You may have seen our masons out there fixing the sidewalks. They just completed Rockwell Park. And again, as, as you said, we have Wally Beach, Halsey Park. We need access to the waterfront for those people that use that. The seawall is crumbling. The only way to pay for it would be to borrow it. So perfect, the perfect way for us not to affect the tax rate. We have a very healthy rainy day fund balance. So it's a perfect year. We ended up with more money from our operating budget. The revenues are very favorable this year. So rather than putting that money into savings, we prefer at this point to keep going with our improvements of our sidewalks, our access to the water, our public buildings. And as you recall, we do have a laundry list. The, the restrooms here at Town Hall, Byfield School needs to be completed. This, we still have grout work to do there, which is fairly expensive. Compost facility, this engineering for drainage on Fox Hill and the end of Collins Street. These are all things that this year we can tackle and get them done if we have the funding. And again, we would really, we, we're really conservative with the borrowing. The last borrowing that we did was just for the bare minimum fire engine and the State Street, State Street Independence Parkport ramp, which is failing. And I believe there's a couple other items in there. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. There aren't any big surprises. It's all, the projects are mainly either projects that have surfaced since the capital project meeting that was approved, or they're on that list that we just didn't have funding for.
And it's also an opportunity for us to do this work now where it's less expensive. Anything we do right now is going to be less than in the future because these things are going to continue to degrade. That's why they're on our capital projects, right? So colleagues, thoughts and next steps?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a quick question for Raquel. Raquel, so just to make sure that I have it correct, we have $500,000 of excess funds and it's going to go to certain buckets. There is also expenditure shortfalls as well for certain area departments. And then the rest would go to the general fund and then from the general fund will reappropriate to the capital, the capital projects. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I have the money and where it's going to be allocated. In regards to the expenditure shortfalls, I just want to make sure that we are budgeting correctly when we, when it comes to the budget time and making sure that these departments are, we're looking at actual numbers rather than, you know, last year's numbers. Because sometimes we, every time it come to budget time, it ends up being that the same department tends to be short. Not that they're doing anything wrong with it. It's just we didn't, we didn't budget enough for them. And should we be, should we be looking into that a little bit further?
Yes, you are correct that that's how the fund balance would flow. It would then revert to cover the line item adjustments, actually departmental adjustments that we'll talk about in a bit. And yes, it would then revert over to capital for these one-time expenditures. Yes, you are correct.
Okay, great, great. And town administrator, I'm, I'm for all the projects that you're, you're looking to do with this money. I think it's fantastic composting the roads, the, the drainage, the sidewalks. I, I think it's fantastic. So those are my questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Tony?
Yes. No, I just, to Tim's point, okay, you know, in trying to understand this, so the 500 is going to cover some shortfalls and the remainder is going to be used for projects? Am I understanding this correct?
In the next, I think the next vote will be, your presentation will be about departmental budgetary transfers and the bottom line that we would end with or what you could consider surplus for the end of the year revenue that is exceeding the budgeted expenses would then be applied to capital.
Okay. I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? What's this council's pleasure?
I move the transfer, that we make the transfers as, as proposed, or that it is, amend the budget. I don't know the exact, that we apply the carryover as proposed to...
Perfect. I think that was well put.
Takes me a minute, but that's okay.
Raquel, is that, are you okay with that motion? Does that cover your, the goals in mind, Mr. Administrator? Does that work?
It would, it would be the assignment of fund balance here and fund balance and carryover, yes.
Perfect. That's what I heard is your motion, Mary. Is there a second?
Yes, exactly.
Tony, second.
Mary made the motion to approve. Tony seconded. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is, sorry, I got in right before you called the vote. I, I just wanted to confirm with Raquel, just for, I think for the general audience that this isn't, we still have money that's set aside for, you know, emergencies and, and things like that. That's, this isn't going to use that money for, you know, spending projects and, and things like that.
No, this has nothing to do with touching any of the rainy day or unassigned fund balance. unassigned fund balance at all. No.
Okay, thank you.
It's a great point to make to Mr. Administrator.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the finance director's point. We're not taking from fund balance. We're just not putting extra money in this year for fund balance.
And to further clarify, excuse me, further clarify that point is that our fund balance is our, our financial advisor is along with our own policy, we are well within, well within our guidelines of our own policy and well within the guidelines of our financial advisors suggesting, and of course, our treasurer's suggestions too. So that's, that's a great thing to reiterate is that these, those funds are there and that's actually a large reason why we were able to pass the budget this year with confidence, knowing that if there were major changes, state and otherwise, that we did have those funds to make sure that services continue unabated. So it's a great point. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, so all know the motion and the second. Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is aye for also from the administrator and the treasurer regarding departmental budget transfers.
Raquel, I'm going to go right back to you again.
Thank you. This came about as part of on the last audit discussion that we had. And it was brought up that within the disclosures within the audit during with the budgetary comparison, there were departments that were noted that had excess expenditures. And the auditor's recommendation said really that there were two ways to do it, that you can absolutely note departments that have excess expenditures because again, you're not exceeding the bottom line. Or another option would be to present final budget departmental adjustments for council approval prior to audit field work. So that's what we're bringing forward tonight. The documents that you have in front of you, we provided you with the last five years to give you historical data to show how that departmental overages were presented in the past. And tonight, what we would like to do is two things. We would like to amend the budget based on favorable revenue. And that will also assist us in departmental transfers. Again, I want to point out this has nothing to do with any bottom line, you know, deficits or anything like that. This is just adjusting, adjusting from one department to another. And it's just really audit cleanup.
Thank you. I'd also like to reiterate an earlier point that the treasurer made that a well-run town because of the fund balance is that our auditors had suggested, as the treasurer said, to do these adjustments now and not later on. But the well-run town has to do with having this outstanding bond rating and the funds there to deal with emergency situations if they happen. The bond rating is particularly important because it allows us to borrow funds at such a low interest rate and then pay those back accordingly. And as you've heard in previous councils, council meetings, excuse me, that the efforts that go into even refunding and or call it refinancing those to save even more. So it is outstanding and I'd like to commend my colleagues, the administrator and also past councils and administrators. This didn't happen by accident. It's a lot of hard work and of course, our current treasurer and past treasurers, I should have said that right in the beginning. Sorry about that. There's a lot of effort and energy that get us to this place and, and it's an outstanding job. So I'm now off my soapbox. I'd like to go back to all of you. What's this council's pleasure? We would just need a motion, if you're comfortable, to approve these departmental budget transfers.
I'll move those. So Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that. Tony?
So Mary made the motion. Tony seconded. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out that we want to, I think we should definitely take a look into these overages in regards to are we budgeting appropriately? Or are these one-time actual expenses and making sure that we're, we're not having to, we can reduce these amount of transfers happening year after year in each budget. So I'm really just talking about more process question.
I think it's a great point and Tim, to, to give you credit, you brought this up in our budget hearing and also the auditing hearing, excuse me, the audits themselves. So it's a great point and I think it's worth, if everyone indulges just for a moment, there's a couple of items here. One of them, if we focus on recreation for a moment, the treasurer and the administrator gave us a breakdown, a quick breakdown, but a breakdown. So if we focus just on it, recreation for a moment, overage of a hundred and one thousand dollars. I think the reoccurring theme here and to your point, Vice Chair, is, and you didn't make this point, but to this point is COVID nineteen. Most of this is COVID nineteen, a hundred and one thousand over. There was two or three hundred meals every day to make sure that seniors, primarily seniors, but not only seniors, got food when they couldn't get out. There was nursing staff at our summer camp where there typically isn't. And, and Mr. Administrator, please correct me if I'm wrong here, but I'm not aware of any COVID issues. I'm talking about cases from our summer camp. So these systems absolutely work. If I may, I'm going to go to one more. As you can tell, my paper is sideways here. The fire department, ninety seven thousand dollars over, but they had a massive increase in runs and in rescue runs. But I'd also like to point out, and the administrator and the treasurer pointed this out to me, is that revenues from third-party billing in English, that means that we bill Blue Cross or Tufts, for example, were almost identical to that number. So it's very interesting. So my point is to say that I believe this is COVID related. I know it's COVID related. But Vice Chair, your point is not lost on any of us. I think that it's very important that we continue to increase those funds if they are always going to be in a deficit. Deficit suggests that we're underfunding them. So and, and actually an increase, if there's extra dollars there, we're overfunding in other places if that in fact exists. So I agree.
And Mr. Chairman and the Town Administrator, I didn't know if there was any state funding when that gets released for any reimbursement of some of these expenses. Does, Mr. Administrator, do you, are you, have you hearing anything about anything coming down for reimbursement there from the state or?
We did a small allotment several months ago. But these expenses that drove up recreation, the COVID expenses, that was at least thirty two, a minimum of thirty two thousand dollars plus the additional staff and personnel required for the summer camp. So a lot of this was COVID nineteen, the fire department. Thank you, Chairman. You, you, you pretty much revealed what happened there. Thirty one, thirty one and I know the fire chief's on, but thirty one hundred rescue calls. It's a huge increase over last year. But our revenues with the EMS receivables was almost the same as what they went over on. Another big part of the fire department's overage was repairs, the engine too, which were unexpected. And I believe one of the rescues, which was last year, was very expensive and unanticipated. So to, to say, you know, this was a very unique year. I think we weathered it extremely well. We're proud, we're proud that as far as we know, there were no illnesses directly related to any of our programming. Recreation is back on track. They're doing outdoor programming. They opened up indoor, which required temperature checks and additional staffing. But people are healthy there. It's working. They are over this year, but without if it weren't for COVID nineteen, I think we'd be very close to being back on track, which is something we've been working on at recreation since we acquired the Quintagamlin Building. Essentially, we, we, we have the old recreation budget with a large facility and a great number of programs. And we discuss this every year. We've been slowly bringing the budget up in line so that it's properly staffed and properly cleaned and maintained. So that's what we're working on. But this is, again, this has been a very unique year. If it wasn't for COVID nineteen, I don't think we would be having this discussion right now. I know we wouldn't be.
Well, you'd be all together right now, wouldn't we?
Yeah. Another, another item relating to COVID nineteen, we had assigned a full-time personnel there in the, in the afternoons for the COVID nineteen response center. So that was a full-time person we had there in the afternoon. So it wasn't, it wasn't cheap, but it was well worth it. And in the end, our operating budget did very well and it was a net balance at the end of the year. So between all the departments, we did very well.
Thank you.
Mr. Administrator, I'm all set. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah.
Just to follow up a little bit on Tim's question. I mean, you know, we're still not over. I mean, I'm glad that everything worked out well in the summer camp and that is a big feat to get that done in person. And, you know, we still have all of these issues in front of us. I heard a reference, but I don't think I heard the whole reference on, on the news or maybe part of the after the governor's speech, I think it might have been today. In terms of some of the questions, sort of in and out of the car, in terms of some of the questions of some of the money that's being withheld, given that there's no state budget and, you know, that they have such big budget gaps. And there was a reference about money being held. I think she said something about money being held from the municipalities. And I'm not sure how that's impacted us yet. I mean, it's relatively early in the fiscal year. And it may be something we may, you may want to address with us at a future council meeting, may not be totally appropriate here. But I just was curious and Tim sort of alluded to that in, in, in his question as well.
But I believe Michelle DeMayo is, has joined us. If we could get her on, Chris Vitale. But I'd like for her to comment on our mic. It's appropriate to bring up the revenues.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Can you find Michelle DeMayo?
She is on, so she just has to unmute.
I'm here.
Michelle, could you brief the council on how the revenues came in this year for property and how much is, is being withheld by not collecting the motor vehicle tax?
Sure. So in looking at the collections from last year versus this year for just the first quarter for August, we collected the same amount in real estate intangibles. For the motor vehicle taxes, based on the phase-out exemption that is in law today, not what the governor is proposing, we had collected about forty one percent of the motor vehicles last year. Forty one percent of motor vehicle levy set for this year is about a million dollars. That will be made up once we know what the governor's budget plan is. So at this point, we are less than one percent uncollected on our first quarter taxes.
That is, that's impressive and, and this, yeah. We live in a beautiful country and a beautiful town where people are willing to pay for the services that are provided to them. And that is, looking in other parts of the world, that is not the norm. So and it's because of that, it's the, that the priority that people put on, on their own community and paying to be part of that is, it's, it's impressive. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Michelle.
Right, Tony.
Okay. Michelle, do we send out the bills for the car tax though this year?
We have not sent out the bills yet. The governor is proposing a change in the phase-out exemption. So we don't know exactly what that amount is going to be at this time. We were hoping to have the General Assembly vote on the budget before we send out the bills so that we're not sending additional bills out if necessary. Just too much confusion between the taxpayer and the office sending out additional bills. We're hoping that the General Assembly will meet in October to set the budget.
No, thank you, Michelle. And I appreciate that. And I fully agree with what you just said, your comments. Because listening in to the governor, you know, the very few times, specifically today, and also the municipal leaders, I'm with you. I hear you loud and clear, you know, so it is what it is, unfortunately.
Yes.
Do you have any other dialogue? Mary?
Just follow up. Is, is it, is there any talk about just not doing it at all in the sense that I remember some years back, I'm not sure if, if it was maybe Nathan and Tim's first year on the council, or maybe it was just prior to that, where, you know, during the recession years that we had maybe that there was just no money. It was probably prior to you guys, but there was just no money at the state and they just decided in the middle of the year to stop all the reimbursement for the car tax. Because they, you know, this is like the second round of them trying to phase that out at the local level. And I mean, is there any talk about that? I mean, I know we're in a decent financial situation as a town, but that's something that I can see them happening, just deciding not to give some share of the revenue to the towns. And, and do you know if there's any discussion of that at this point or isn't there, isn't it really gotten to that point, Michelle or Steve?
Hasn't got to that point yet. The only thing that I've heard in discussion has been if the state decides not to give the town those funds anymore, that, that would also eliminate the phase-out exemption. We would go back to taxing at a one hundred percent of the motor vehicle tax.
Right.
Thank you.
Michelle, one more question, if I may. Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Tony, thank you. Michelle, how much would it be? I mean, you said that for the first quarter, we behind by a million dollars. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay, what would be the total amount for the, for the four quarters if we go uncollected?
So if we stay at where the law sits today, as the law is written today, are, would be just over two million dollars. Sorry, I'm just.
That's okay.
Just over two million, two point six million. And if the governor's budget is approved and, and she is suggesting to change the exemption from four thousand dollars to thirty five hundred, it would increase our levy by, not by very much. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I, it was under three million. If we go back to the one hundred percent collection, I haven't run those numbers yet.
It's okay. We appreciate down the input thus far. And I'm sure as things develop, you can keep us on the loop.
And this is a great example of, of how subject to the state of when we pass our budget, how much is, is affected by what would seem to be a small decision is a massive decision on how it affects our town budget and, and what we need to do. And then ultimately, the residents of Bristol, of course. So is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, I think, you know, all of us, we need to make sure we're reaching out to our state reps, senators, just to make sure that we let, let them know that there, this is kind of a cluster. And, you know, it's causing concerns down the line for us. So we need, we need communication. We need answers. And if they can get us anything sooner rather than later, it'd be very appreciative.
Agreed. So, sorry, our dialogue went a little bit, the motion, there was a motion and a second to approve. Was there any other discussion? Okay, Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron? I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council is item J one, and that is bid number nine forty-two. This is for end of road retrofits. We have six proposals provided. The first is from JML excavation of Bristol in the amount of fifty seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. The second is from East Coast Landscaping and Construction of Portsmouth in the amount of seventy two thousand dollars. The third, now again, it's an improvement of Providence in the amount of one hundred and forty five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. The third from Skirker Construction of West Warwick in the amount of fifty two thousand, five hundred dollars. The fifth from RP Ianachillo and Sons Construction Company of Providence in the amount of ninety seven thousand dollars. And the final proposal from Key Corporation of Wakefield in the amount of sixty five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Mr. Administrator, remind this council, this end of road retrofits is to make sure the water quality or the runoff from the road is the lessening of oils and dirts and sands. That's what this, these, the purpose of this is, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. All right. What's this council's pleasure? All right, what's this council's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion.
Go ahead, Tim.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Tony, second.
Tim made the motion to refer, seconded by Tony. Is there any other discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is item K1, and that is from the periodic report provided by the Barrington Director of the Bristol County Water Authority, Alan Klepper, as he normally does for each meeting.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to receive and file.
Tony, second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to receive and files. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries.
I believe we're back to our executive session.
Yes, sir. Mr. Solicitor?
The motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to 42465A5 relative to the sale of public property.
Motion to adjourn, or motion, yeah. Okay.
Nope.
You're going to executive session.
Going to. Mary, thank you.
Mary, I'm going to take that as a second. Is that okay? All right. And a second.
Fill me out on that one, Mr. Chairman.
Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony? Didn't hear you. Sorry.
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Okay, so I've also, I also vote aye, so motion carries. So this meeting will go dormant for a bit as we go into accession and we'll be back to adjourn. If there's any action, then we'll take it at that point. Thank you, everyone. I'll see you in the other meeting. Before we go, everybody has executive session, meeting ID and password, correct? Excellent. We'll see you there in a moment.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.